Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting, special workshop meeting. The time right now is 6:04 PM. Again, this is a special workshop meeting. We are going to go ahead and ask that Sherry call the role.
Councilmember's present is Suckie Forum. Folter, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Carrow.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. We have three discussion items tonight. The first one is item 3.1. This is utility system development charges for accessory dwelling units with Tyler Glenn. Nope. Jaka.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not Tyler Glenn, I'm Amy Bright. So tonight, we're here to talk with you about accessory dwelling units and relating to the utility system development charges, park impact fees, and traffic impact fees. So this differs from the introduction that you were provided last week. So just an overview of this presentation. I'm going to give you another introduction, just refresh your memory on what we spoke about last week with House Bill 1337. And then Jaka and Scott are going to go over utility system development charges. And Ben Swanson is going to go over park impact fees. And then back to Jaka and Scott for transportation impact fees. So tonight, we're having a discussion regarding potential updates to fees and connection fees. The first reading of these potential changes will be on June 10th, tentatively, and then a second reading on June 24th. And then July 1st, the new state law goes into effect. So just a refresher from last week, what are ADUs? They are small residences that share a lot with a primary dwelling unit. So the ADU itself can be contained within, the ADU itself can have its own kitchen, kitchenette, bathroom, living and sleeping area. They can be attached, so that could be within the primary dwelling unit, so that's an attic or a basement. Or they can be attached to the side or rear of a primary dwelling unit. Another option is a detached dwelling unit. And so that can be in an existing detached garage or a standalone structure. So with House Bill 1337, it allows for two ADUs per lot in zones where we allow single-family detached dwelling units. So they can be attached, detached, or a combination of the two. So we'll need to, we need to allow for these in all of those zones. And we can also, we also must allow for the conversion of existing structures, like a detached garage, into an ADU. So right now, we only allow one accessory dwelling unit per lot. And the proposed regulation is that we allow two ADUs per lot in addition to the primary dwelling unit.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk about utility system development charges. And if you ask me any very difficult questions, I will defer to Scott. So Monroe's policy question here is, should new development of ADUs pay system development charges or capital connection charges, the cost of hooking up to the utilities for the expanded capital water and sewer facilities that are required to address the increased demand that those developments place on the systems? Just as a reminder, kind of a background again, we went through TIFs recently, transportation impact fees. These are somewhat similar, although slightly different, a little bit of a nuance here. One-time system connection charges, so that's what STCs are, established by city council. And they are based on the fiscal analysis most recently supported, performed by FCS Group. And that was in 2024 as a component of our system plan. The goals of STCs are to capture the equitable cost share for the demand placed on the city system by that new connection. So STCs have revenue restrictions. They are to be used only to fund utility capital projects or to pay debt service on capital projects. And development in the absence of STCs means that growth-related capital costs, much like in transportation, are born in large part by the existing customers. So the current basis for STC charges lies in MMC 1302010. Residential structures shall be charged for one water and one sewer MCE per dwelling unit. So I put some examples up there. A single-family residence is one MCE, a duplex makes sense, two MCEs. And then multifamily apartments, so whether it's four apartments or 40, it's a dwelling unit charge. So if it's a 40 apartment complex, that's equivalent to 40 MCEs. Non-residential, and so this would be the commercial side of things, are based on the size of the water meter needed to supply the customer's calculated peak demand. So for example, if a large manufacturing facility came into Monroe, say maybe a RoMac or something like that, and they needed their own dedicated eight-inch meter to serve their facility, they would be charged 80 MCEs. So, okay. We do have some exceptions in the current code. The 1302010 allows for one-bedroom or studio residential units located specifically in the downtown commercial zone to have a reduced rate of one-third of one MCE. Affordable housing in the downtown commercial zone gets an 80% reduction per unit in system development charges. Homeless transitional shelters get a 30 MCE exemption, so they're essentially treated as a commercial facility. If, it is, we noted kind of unique that one gets an 80% reduction and the other one gets an MCE credit. I do not know the history of that code. We actually discussed that today and weren't quite sure why that was treated that way. We could certainly look into it for the council if that was something you'd like us to bring back. And then accessory dwelling units are exempt from system development charges at this time. And they must share the primary, or use of the primary development unit, development, primary dwelling, gosh, unit water meter. So here's just kind of a diagram, if you will. It's very, very low, lowbrow, green being sewer in this case, or maybe that's a teal color, I'm not sure, and then water being water, in this case being blue. Kind of showing how this would work using the graphic that Amy was talking about earlier. The top two, the, I guess, attached ADUs, you can see where there's primary ownership and they are sharing a service connection to both the water and the sewer. And then in the detached ADUs, and this is where there tend to be a little bit more operational issues, is that the water or sewer is routed through the primary owners or connects to the primary owners' utility connections in some ways. So this can create some, I think, flow issues or service issues, which I'll show you on the next slide here, kind of bring up, and this was also in the agenda bill.
Councilmember Gamble?
You want to go?
Go ahead and go back.
Okay. Yeah. No problem. So currently, our code doesn't allow for more than one meter to serve a lot. The new law allows ADUs to be sold separately, so condominiumized, which Amy talked about last week a little bit, from the primary dwelling unit. And detached ADU owners serve through the shared utility meter connection side, or side sewer connection with the primary dwelling unit. So that's that third graphic I showed you. So the potential for conflict there is amongst owners with shared utilities but different properties on the same lot, or different residences on the same lot, I guess. So sometimes it can be a challenge for owners to identify their fair share of the monthly charges. That can lead to private disputes with two separate owners running off the same meter. Non-payment, water shut-off, who's responsible? So this is kind of direct feedback from our customer service staff and some of our inspectors, where we do have shared side sewer connections in the city right now. Or, and this is the more significant one, that we've also experienced is public work staff refusal by one owner to share in the repair or maintenance cost of a shared connection. So one owner might be downstream of where there's a failure in a side sewer, but there is a failure. The owner that's upstream of that failure is experiencing a backup. The owner that's downstream is not and doesn't want to participate in the repair of the sewer itself. So I will stop there.
Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
That's where I don't see that, I mean, are we, are you suggesting that we should try to solve something that's not the city's problem?
No, I'm merely pointing out that there are conflicts that we've been notified of, so.
But it's not a conflict for us, I guess is what you're saying. We would just, you know, hey, if they don't, we would treat them as one. They're not paying. So for us, it's, I guess that's why.
No, you're correct. For the city, this is not a conflict issue. Our customer feedback has been that people reach out to the city and ask for help with this, and we are not able to assist them much more than whatever little we can do to try to. No, they're not specifically from accessory dwelling units, but they are from similar type situations in the utility build-out where they have shared side sewers and shared connections. That's correct. We don't have a lot of ADUs right now. However, the build-out of a detached ADU, if side sewers were allowed to be shared, would likely lead at some point to similar concerns being brought by our customers to the city. It is not the city's problem, though, you're correct.
Okay, cool. I just, I have that several as we don't. And I, I wouldn't want to put something in place because we're trying to solve for a private issue that's going to make a hardship for another, because it works on both sides, right? Because I'm sure you're going to see a suggestion that they would have their own capital impact or their own feed, hook them up on their own sewer or their own water, so that they could, that would be one way to sort of do that, right?
That would be one way to do that, yes. So we have some options that'll come up later in the presentation that'll kind of touch on that.
Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, while we're discussing that, I had the exact same thought. I was trying to figure out why, or ADUs, why this scenario would be an issue for us, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we proceed? All right, please continue.
Excuse me. So this is the information we were able to gather from our neighboring cities that have gone through this process already. There aren't that many, admittedly. We looked at several others. And these are the folks that have gone through this process already. And this identifies what the system development charges are that they have put in place for ADUs. Each, Snohomish Arlington and Edmonds did things a little bit differently. You'll see that, excuse me, Snohomish and Edmonds have STC charges at the, I guess, building permit phase of the process, whereas Arlington defers those until later on down the road. Arlington kind of being the outlier, but a unique solution for detached ADUs, that fee that you can see there in the middle box is due upon the sale to different owners. So it's kind of a hybrid solution between what Snohomish and Edmonds chose to do. All of them, though, require that if a ADU is going to be constructed, that the refurbishment or upsize of the side sewer connection be made if it's found to be upon inspection in need of a refurbishment or if it's in need of an upsize. So there was a time when a side sewer connection was a four-inch. In order to serve two residences, it typically needs to be a six. And then there was a time when side sewer connections were made out of concrete or clay tile or other types of pipe that have, you know, can be older and fail. And so they can be either slip-lined or upgraded to plastic to ensure that they're in good working order when the ADU goes in. Any questions about the table?
Go ahead.
So Monroe current code compared to the P3 committee recommendation, our current code, Monroe does not charge STCs for water or sewer, and there are no physical connection charges, so the combined total is zero. Shared utilities are allowed with no conditions, and there is no requirement to refurbish or upsize existing sewer if it's deficient.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble? Councilmember Gamble, let's pull the microphone over to you. I should have caught that before. Thank you.
So this is exactly what we didn't want to happen before, is that what we're proposing now, which is an impact fee charge on an existing connection on a single-family unit of upwards of $17,000 to $19,000. When we're going to charge them on the back end for their increased usage, or just hooking into their existing connection. And like when I did mine, the city didn't do anything. I did it, I tapped into my own everything. I think all it was was an inspection, that was it. And now I pay for additional use, and it's metered on my property, but it just seems weird to me that we would have this thing where we're trying to, we're trying to, we want more people to use ADUs, that sort of thing. As a council, previously, we had the policy to try to do that. And that's why we got rid of those fees, because it didn't make sense. It totally makes sense to me if you, if you, if you're hooking up, and I actually like the, maybe the Arlington recommendation, I think of later, if you're going to condominiumize it and you got to have its own connection, then you should charge because it's another connection. But if you can use the existing fee, I don't understand. That's not an impact, there's really, we're going to be charging for the additional use. So I don't, that doesn't make sense to me at all. In fact, it kind of flies in the face of what this entire effort is to try to make people, or not make, make it easier for the ADU. We actually will make it worse for us and for our residents if we were to go this route.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, we're talking about that rate that's metered, and there's now somebody else in the ADU. Does that fully compensate for the amount of use? Does that make sense? So the amount that we're charging, the increased rate for water and sewer, if it's metered, when it's metered, does that fully compensate for the money that we need for those additional people being there to run our facility, to keep it up-to-date, upgrades, those kinds of things?
Not in the way our code is currently written. So our code is currently written to charge by the dwelling unit. And so that is how our capital connection fees or STCs were calculated, is by the dwelling unit. So, and I think that's a differentiating factor. So yes, the monthly usage goes up, but the dwelling unit has doubled. And the way our current code is written, outside of the exception, of course, that's in the current code, the way our current code is written, we calculate our capital connection fees by the dwelling unit. That makes any sense?
So the monthly fee doesn't make up for all of the things that we have to do to maintain the facility?
That's correct. The monthly fees, our metered rate is meant to pay for the commodity of the water and the operations of the system. The capital replacement or increase in size and capital replacements in the system or debt service is meant to be captured through that STC.
And then does that reflect the 50%? Can't we only do 50% per RCW or no?
You're just barely ahead of us in the presentation. That has to do with transportation impact fees.
Okay. And then I think with, I mean, we'll talk about the whole fee stuff, but then I think refurbished upsize in existing sewers, I think that's something that we should probably explore with, was it the yes on the far right there? The bottom, so, yeah. I'll just keep listening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Walker?
I think the P3 meeting was a while back, so I just want to make sure that I'm remembering the correct conversation. Obviously, we've had a lot of conversations about ADUs and hookup fees recently. I think in the P3 meeting, we were talking about with this new law, there's the potential for the construction of a lot more ADUs. We've heard about it in the potential for it coming from the building community. Obviously, the theory that I've heard of for this law was to increase housing. So I think the idea that we are trying to address is that, just to be dramatic, let's say an ADU was built on every lot, that could allow one in Washington, obviously, that would put a lot more load on our utilities. And so the first question is, well, if there is an ADU built that's potentially meant to be a housing unit, do we want it to have its own hookup? Or do we want the utilities to go through the existing hookup to the ADU, right? That's the first question. And then the second one was, how do we want to address the new load on the system? Because if we don't address the new load on the system, you could have a new ADU, a new housing lot on every lot with capacity in the city with all that load, and we don't charge for the increased usage? That kind of recaps that conversation that we had in P3?
I find that to be accurate, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it was, all right.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
So if I was to build a bedroom, additional bedrooms, and added a bathroom, there would be no additional impact because it's not an additional dwelling unit, correct?
Under our current code, that's correct.
That's correct. So if I did that, but that'd be additional impact on the, on the system, right?
Well, one would assume.
Yeah. So if we added two baths, what I'm going with, is this the discussion we had last time on this particular issue? Is that, yeah, go ahead.
Unless you added a family member, I would assume the amount of water would be the same.
You're, yeah, no, but that's exactly, so what happened when we had this in place? This is where the whole statement of, we feel like it's going to be, we're going to add, we can do this today, we can have ADUs today. There's all this built, the only thing in the bill that I can see that makes it different for us, right, is, okay, yeah, we got to address the condominium thing. That's why I like, you know, when you put up there on the Arlington thing, maybe that's a way to, the delayed on that, like, hey, we want to, we want to address that. But there's nothing from stopping residents from doing that today on an 800 square foot. So we're changing, everything that I saw last week, there wasn't really a lot of changes to our existing of what we have. It was, would be an increase from 800 to 1,000 feet. The additional would be for two, you know, up to two at 1,000 feet, right, per? But what we're talking about is putting a pretty sizable thing in the path to basically do the exact opposite of what we already have, in my opinion, something that is, hey, here's our code. It's not, what is, you're saying that, hey, this is less restrictive, this is supposed to spur in growth, right? There's nothing in it that we don't have currently in order to do that. So if we're going to put something on, because we think we're going to get this massive growth, we're actually doing the exact opposite by putting in an impact fee of that nature, because that's what we had last time. We ended up, at my particular point in time, when I had my ADU that I was trying to get across, you know, the line, there was four different dwelling units that were in, that were in, I'm going to say invalid, but they basically had to get rid of them because they had put an ADU in and they never drew a permit. The reason why they never drew the permit is because it was, at that particular time, $12,000 to put it in. And I'm still struggling with, hey, this doesn't do for the impact on the network, because back then, I have to go back and look at the tape because we've had this discussion at length. That was the whole reason why we did what we did, because we, I remember specifically asking the question, what's the impact on the system if you're adding, you know, an ADU? If you're using your existing connection and all you're doing is connecting the ADU? It's the equivalent of adding an additional bathroom or two bathrooms, because you're, hey, I got to add it in because I'm adding a bedroom or whatever the case may be, and we're going to meter for that usage for the, for the addition. So I struggle with that. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Folter?
There you go. Okay. Along that vein, I think that the difference would be, we're talking about attached versus detached, because certainly adding two bedrooms and a bathroom en suite for each, that's just adding to your house. But once you make it a separate unit, now it can be sold separately, so I think we do have to address that because of the new law. I do kind of agree with you. I'm already digging the Arlington model, but I feel like you were in the middle of a presentation and you hit a comma, and then we interrupted. So I can't wait to see what's next.
Thank you. Did you have another statement or did you want to continue with the presentation?
I did want to add something. I think, I think I have a reasonable response because I understand what you're saying and really what the difference is. It's not in the water used or the consumption of, it's in the fiscal calculation to get to what we charge for an STC. And so how the city did that was by the dwelling unit. And so therein lies the conflict in these two things. I hope that speaks to what you've, some of what you've been talking about this evening, at least to understand that as we go back in time to that, so.
Thank you. Please continue.
So we were at the end here anyhow, which is great. So action options, action options, excuse me. There's the P3 recommendation, which we've discussed, which would be the STCs in the full amount plus a physical connection charge. There are a couple of other options that are in your agenda bill, and there are certainly more options if the council wanted to discuss those and come up with something that varies from either of these as well. There's the option to reduce STC charges 50% and charge a lower rate. There's certainly the Arlington option, which was talked about by a couple of council members, or there's the option to continue the current code and exempt ADUs from STCs. So fortunately, that's the, that is the last slide. Mayor, back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. And what do you need from us today related to this? I know this is coming back.
We are looking for some consensus from the council, maybe one or two options that they'd like to see as potential ordinances that we could bring back and then for a vote.
Okay. So I turn to the council on the action options that are up there. Is there a preference for one or two of those? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
One of the things that I was wondering about, at first I was going to say, I really like the Arlington model because theoretically, it might be not until they're selling it or creating the housing for a new person that they have to make that decision to add a new meter. But when you think about it, unless condominiumize, however you want to say it, turning these into condominiums becomes mainstream, then the point of the law would actually be to increase rental capacity, at least in my mind. Or that, that's probably, I could see that happening before, these are all units being sold on their own. Therefore, you might have a lot more people building mother-in-laws to rent them out before you have people building condominiums on their lot. So if there's a lot of rentals being built, let's say that within a year or two, there's another suit that shuts down condominiums in Washington, and none of these things get condos, then you've got a lot of rentals that may never be charged these fees, which is going to lead to kind of existing unit owners, property owners, potentially taking on more of the burden of these utility charges, at least when you were talking about the way that we calculate the split. Is that, was that kind of the point that you were getting at? Was that you could have all of these rentals or other units, potential living units that are basically skating by or not getting charged those usage fees? In more dramatic terms?
That's a, that's a fair summary. Again, in the way we did the calculations when Monroe developed its STCs, it was based on the dwelling unit. And so there are other ways to solve that problem, and perhaps that's something that the council might like us to look at when we come back and do our holistic rate study and system development charge. Sounds like that's a general yes, because there are other ways to do that. That's how the fiscal calculation was done. We are here now in a very different time where development is different than it was back when we did that. And yeah, it's reasonable to say.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, which option is the Arlington option?
The Arlington option is not one of the other choices that's on the screen. However, the council could certainly create its own choice and staff could prepare an ordinance and bring that back for consideration.
Okay. I would be interested in that. And then I want to go back to the issue that Councilmember Gamble brought up at the very beginning about the private issue with people coming. And I just want to emphasize that I, again, that I completely agree with that. I don't think that's the city's problem. If people build an ADU on their lot and they're renting it out, or they're having their in-law stay there, and there's a dispute about whatever issue with the connections, that's a private owner, homeownership issue, and they'll figure it out themselves. That's not a city issue. So thank you for bringing the information about that, but I don't think it's related to the city at all. And then going back to the slide about the exceptions and the exemptions that we have, especially in the downtown core and things like that, how, I'm curious how many times that has been, that incredible exemption and exception have been taken advantage of.
I don't have that information at this time. We can get it for you, though.
Okay, thanks. I think, going back to Councilmember Gamble's point, we have made, I remember all those discussions that we had and the frustration that the council at that time had with all these exorbitant fees and we're wanting to make Monroe affordable and wanting to help with affordable housing in our city and make it easy. And so we did away with all those extra fees and we wanted to make it so that... away with all those extra fees and we wanted to make it so that people can do exactly what we talked about last week when you're in, when your family's struggling with health or whatever, and you need to get something up quick and make it happen. And so we're, we've already been known as a city for years that loves ADUs. You can pretty much put an ADU almost anywhere you want in our city currently. And now with these new laws, personally, I don't think that the numbers are going to spike because we've already been a city that has welcomed ADUs. So I, I think we're creating, I think we're creating more, more work than is necessary. We've had this, these incredible easy laws and easy ways to put ADUs on the books for years, and yet last week we heard that like six ADUs were done in the last six years. I mean, like crazy small numbers. So I, I don't think that we're going to see some spike all of a sudden when we look at the track history and the data from the last dozen years or so. So that's, that's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Jake, did you have something else?
Yes. Just quickly, something I should have mentioned when Councilmember Walker was speaking earlier. One of the things that staff anticipates is that in the future, developers will likely come in and essentially build out a new plat with ADUs. So that's something for the council to consider. I just wanted to share that. It's a possibility. We don't have any proof that that's going to happen, nor do we have any numbers to back it up. It's just something that staff has considered. So I just wanted to share that out. It was probably part of that conversation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough and then Councilmember Beaumont.
Well, I'll look forward to the presentation of options that comes forward and hopefully some sort of class that can, that I can understand before I'll vote on the subject at all because I'm not sure I am understanding the difference between what we're talking about up here and what Councilman Gamble's talking about and Councilman Hanford. So I'm going, I may be slower than everybody else, but I'm not understanding exactly the pros and cons of what we're doing here. So I'll look forward to that before I vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Beaumont?
Thanks for the presentation, Director Roberts. Just for the record, I'd like to say that I think it's hard to predict what we're going to see in terms of what's going to happen. And I think what we're trying to do is just take a look at everything, maybe get out ahead of it. There are a lot of fiscal issues here. If what you say might happen, none of us know what's going to happen. I love the idea of being able to take care of parents. My mom and dad live with me, as you all know, and I agree, it'd be great to be able to just put something up. I know, Jason, that you have an ADU at your house. I've seen it. So I agree, we need to keep it easy to build and help, you know, people. It's just when it turns into a condo or a resale, as we addressed in your presentation tonight, that I think things get a little murky. But again, I just think it's hard to predict and I think you're doing a great job trying to get out ahead of it, bring some issues to us that we might consider. And I understand the fiscal issues. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've heard an interest in the Arlington model. Does, does anybody disagree with coming back with an option with the Arlington model shown? Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll flag option one, bring back Arlington model. I thought I saw Councilmember Fisher. Go ahead.
So yeah, Arlington model and then some of that 50% stuff.
Can you, can you restate the second part of that?
Yes, that 50%.
The 50%?
Yeah, option two as well, just to kind of dive into both those things a little bit and kind of, kind of figure them out. And then I think people under, are saying that there's not a lot of ADUs downtown. There are a ton of ADUs downtown. None of them have been permitted. So to, to, to say that we don't have ADUs or we haven't had ADUs or we're only going to get a couple over the next few years. So recently, there was some homes that were for sale in the downtown area, looking at some of them myself. They are not permitted ADUs. We have a ton of them downtown. They're everywhere. And I think we would be very surprised at the amount of ADUs that we actually have. So finding that line of it needing to be permitted and also making it accessible and affordable is going to be something that we get to, fortunately, all discuss up here. So yes, just the, the thought that we don't have any ADUs or we have very few downtown, I just wanted to kind of correct that. There are a ton of them. There are very few permitted downtown ADUs.
Okay. Just a time check here. We're at 37 minutes into this. We've got a regular meeting starting in, at seven o'clock. Councilmember Walker, I saw your flag go up. I did hear an interest from Councilmember Fisher for option number two, the 50%. Do any council members disagree with option being the Arlington option and also the 50% option?
I disagree.
You disagree? Okay. Does anybody have any other options that they would like to have council staff bring back for? And I'll, I'll come to you after Councilmember Walker. Does anybody else have any other options that are on the board that you want to have brought back? Okay. So right now, we're at 50% and we're at the Arlington as two to bring back. And then we're going to see what other things are, are said. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Ms. Bright, could I ask really quick, what are some of the lots? I know we have to still vote on, on something related to it, but what are the, the lot sizing changes as it relates to ADUs?
So the only, the only thing regarding lot size is we're removing the requirement in our ADU code that says that you need to meet the primary dwelling unit lot size. We're removing that because in our bulk standards, we don't have a minimum lot size in any of those residential zones. So I know that sounds a little confusing, but there's essentially not a lot size. They do need to meet lot coverage and most setbacks in most cases.
I was, I was trying to remember. I, I thought there was something about those requirements that is also leading to the increased likelihood of these being built as well, not just the change from one ADU to two. But I could be wrong, but Director Roberts, I just wanted to ask with the option that's brought back to us, could you bring information about current capacity of our utilities and maybe like a worst case and best case scenario of if, I don't know, 1,000 ADUs are built out, what it would look like in terms of strain on our systems versus not? I know it's very hard to do, but I think that that might be a pertinent question.
Yeah, we can get that out of our system plans, talk about what our, it's really has to do with our wastewater treatment plant capacity.
Right.
And then our existing water connections with that. Right? So, sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
Is there anything stopping a builder right now from short plating or doing something with an ADU with our current code?
No, not for one, for one ADU. The only thing they wouldn't be able to do at this point is condo that unit and sell it as a separate unit.
Right. So they could, that's been on our books for a while, right?
Correct. They could potentially do a development where there's, have one primary dwelling unit and an ADU per lot.
Okay. We really, we haven't had any do that, correct?
Not that I'm aware of in the last 10 years.
And then the good point you've, you brought up, Jake, is that the one piece that, you know, is the rental component. That's the only, you know, difference is that you don't have to be in, on one side or the other. So that is the one, the one difference. Again, that would be a, the property owner still would be responsible for the, you know, the water discrepancy. But I, I just, if we're trying to keep, keep with what we're trying to do, which has been to try to promote ADUs, and I get what you're saying, Councilmember Fisher. I would love to see, you know, what those are. The, the big reason why we had that problem before was because of our immense impact fee. So I don't know how, what we would propose in 50% and/or otherwise would help us address that. But I, that's why I would really like to see where we address it through the condominium, you know, side of the equation, if that, if that were to occur and keep our, our zero SDC. I don't, just for the record, I already went through this, so it doesn't matter. I mean, it doesn't personally do anything for me. I just remember how much a desperation, you know, I was, how much it impacted the family. And just for the concept of usage, you know, my parents moved in, my mom went into an Alzheimer's home, my dad lived in the house by himself, my kids grew up and went away. We're consuming less by far on the network with an ADU than we were previously. So for what it's worth, I mean, I just, you got to be, in my opinion, we got to be cautious about what we're trying to solve. A private property issue or a private homeownership side of thing, we set policy, let it go and not try to solve three steps in. That's what we're trying to do, in my opinion, but whatever. Thank you.
So we've got, we've got direction then from the council to come back with the Arlington model and option number two. Okay. All right. Next part of the presentation?
Great. Thank you. So here discussing, last week, I believe, consent agenda council passed the park impact fees for dwelling units. We're back now to discuss park impact fees for accessory dwelling units, which, Councilmember Fisher, the law caps at 50% of the, of the charge for impact fees. And so this is where this, this, this particular one comes in. And similar to, you know, the last conversation is this is being introduced as, you know, the policy question to council of how do you, how would you like to proceed with this? And I think, you know, kind of with this last discussion and going into this one, is probably the bigger difference is a, a new group's coming to the table now where traditionally it used to be the homeowner and building an accessory dwelling unit for maybe a little extra rental income, maybe for a family member. Now you're bringing more developers to the table because under our current code, you have your house, you build an ADU, you sell that, the house and the ADU all go together in that sale because it's one lot. Under this new one, when you condominiumize these, and this is where I think the builders are going to be attracted to it, and I think it's a, a, a good option, is that they can come in, they can build their house, build two to ADUs, condominiumize those and then sell those individually separately. They can sell the ADU separately. And so that's where I think why we're bringing, why we're bringing this back again is because it's not the, it's not going to be the ADU laws that we had yesterday. Tomorrow's ADU laws are going to be a little different and bring, you know, a, a different group in. And so by condominiumize those, and it's almost like a de facto short plat, right, where you're, where you now have three units on these lots with potentially, you know, three families. I don't know the family size in there. So with our, our impact fees for accessory dwelling units, those individual units are now going to have users that are going to use the park. And so for the, I think you have the slide up there showing that. Yeah. So, so this is, this is the, this is the, do you have another one? Or is that the, is that the? Okay, good. Good. So this is, essentially, we, we did is we took the per capita count cost with the 50, oh yeah, there's 50% reduction. So we reduced that per capita cost by half from the adopted ADU fees. So this is what the table looks like at, at 50%. And so this is the maximum amount the city could charge if they choose to charge ADUs for park impact fees. And we went all the way up to four bedrooms. A four-bedroom ADU probably isn't in the realm, but we put it in there anyway. And so just to give council an idea of the maximum allowable charge for an ADU and really this discussion and, and just kind of, you know, the, the thought to marinate on is, you know, these people are going to be using the park system. And so there's going to be, you know, capital need to address these. Where is, where does council feel along those lines? Should it be charged at the maximum? Should we charge a portion of it? Shouldn't not be charged any of it? And so that's really what we're bringing tonight is to take a look at, you know, the maximum allowable the city could charge under the, under the, the new laws and then just to think about what's going on with the future of ADUs and how that might evolve. To Councilmember Gamble's point, we really, we don't know what, what we're going to get. And, you know, Councilmember Beaumont's point is, are, do we want to play it safe and charge upfront? So if we do get a rush and developers are attracted, or do we want to, you know, stay as is and, and have those things come in? But again, I, I don't think these are going to be the ADUs of yesteryear.
Okay. So what are you looking for? Just, just informing or?
Yeah, just some guidance of what, what council would like to see brought back or any additional information.
So councilmembers' thoughts? Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
The current today is nothing, right?
Correct. Zero.
Okay. So we're, we're going to grow this one to, you said 1,500, right? Is that what I saw?
Uh, yeah. Or it goes anywhere, yeah, starts at 1,000. So you have per capita cost per unit, and that's the 1.1 multiplied per capita of a cost, and that's how we come up with the 1,636 for a studio.
Top of the potential 17,000 impact fee for the sewer, correct?
Everything combined, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. So you're upwards about 20,000 now on a two-bedroom ADU, correct?
Correct. Yeah, depending on what.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
So turning to the council, what is your preference? Do you, do you want to, do, do you want to proceed with looking at the 50% reduction? Do you want a different reduction? Councilmember Fisher?
I would say proceed with the 50% with a couple of things that have changed. For one, we can't require anybody to go less than 1,000 square feet now, right, per the state? Is that right?
Yes, we can't require less than 1,000 square feet.
And we can put two of them on there. So now we're at
Yes.
2,000 square feet of ADUs. Plus, was it accurate that we can't put more stringent building restrictions on them? So basically, if you have this, have a, a house that's 20 feet tall, you can put an ADU that's 35 feet tall?
We, I will discuss that more at
So basically what I'm doing is I'm just
Yes.
trying to kind of explain why I'm okay with the 50% because they are bigger. We can put on more and there is going to be more use. So that's where I'm at.
Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I agree. I do think that when you, again, getting out in front of this, we don't know. And I think that's kind of the underlying, sort of the foundation of this whole discussion today is we just don't know what's going to happen. So we're trying to make decisions based on the possibility that there won't be very many or a developer's going to come in and there's going to be a ton. But I do think we need to support our parks. I think we need money for our parks. And I agree with Ben that there may be families in these units that are using the parks and we had a levy fail and we need money. So I don't think there's a big issue, in my opinion, with the 50%. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that, what you both just said. And I'd love for us to be able to differentiate between the condominium style and people like Councilmember Gamble who just wanted to have a place for his parents to live. Because I may be wanting to have a place for my parents to live. Councilmember Beaumont just said the same thing and then maybe others here eventually too. So I'd love to see, to me, that's like night and day. It's two different, totally two different groups. And so I'd, we need to have some kind of a differentiation as we're looking at all these policies. I'm not okay with just saying lumping all of those people in the same group and saying, yep, all ADUs have to do this. Because it's not, it's not looking out for all the citizens, in my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble and Councilmember Fulter?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I'm kind of taken aback, to be honest, because of all the discussions we've had from an affordable, affordable housing perspective and what we're trying to do across the board. It, this just doesn't make sense to me in any way, shape or form. Because if you start adding this up, it's going to prevent and stop people. We're very scared. It is obvious to me that we think this is just going to be a boom. There was a similar discussion when we had this back in 2015 or whatever it was, that there may be just this huge boom. I, I'm, I'm at a loss on this one. I would be very much interested in, like Kevin said, totally get the condominiumizing, you know, piece of it. But these are the, the type of scenarios that we're trying to promote and have been talking about that for at least all 14 years or 13 years that I've been here. So this would be a complete 180 flip, you know, on that and that we're deathly afraid that there's just going to be this huge boom and run and massive use of the parks. For what it's worth, my dad never used the park in the 10 years he was alive, other than to watch his, his grandson play or, you know, whatever. So there's both sides of this equation. It's not, you know, I just, I think we're going a little to the
Councilmember Fulter?
In the interest of time, I'll try to keep it quick. I do agree with the 50% thing we need to look at. Kevin, when you were talking about how people use their properties, so they should be charged differently, that doesn't make sense with your hands-off approach to, we don't care, let them work it out. To me, if you're going to tell people to work out their own issues, work out their own issues, we're talking about the place, the unit itself, how much does that cost to be added into our community, not what they're going to do with it. That doesn't matter, because that can change from year to year. You know, your parents can pass away and suddenly got a good renter, whatever. So I am interested in the 50% idea. And man, we're cutting it close. This is going to be a good discussion. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. So I've got three councilmembers that have expressed an interest in coming back with the 50%. Is there objection to bringing back the 50%? Because again, the whole point here is to give direction to the staff, so they can bring this back for a hearing for additional conversation. Is there any objection to bringing back the 50%? Okay. Seeing none, we have transportation next, and our meeting starts at 7:00. Councilmember Walker, did you want to add anything before we move on to the transportation? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
There we go. Okay. We'll try and keep this on track. So, Jacob, thank you. So we talked quite a bit about transportation back fees recently, and this is very much parallels what the park's impact fee is. It's a GMA fee. We charge new development to help pay their share of their impact to our infrastructure. In this case, it's streets and sidewalks and bike lanes. So, go ahead and move to the next slide. So again, the fee is capped at 50% of what we would charge the primary resident on the lot. That's the state law that's being proposed. Currently, we don't charge any fees for an ADU. So that's kind of the range where, where we're looking at. Current ADU law, or current ADU code for transportation impact fees here is $0. And state law allows us to go up to 50%. Jacob, could you? And so we did a couple comparisons, looking at Snohomish Arlington Edmonds. Their, their rates for ADUs are showed in the center column. On the right, you can see what they've chose to do, and they chose to take it to the state allowed 50% rate. Again, Monroe doesn't charge anything. If Monroe did what P3 recommended, 50% of a single-family unit, we would assess them $3,728. Or if it's a more of, if the unit that, the primary residence is actually a multifamily building, then they would be charged $2,116 for an additional, for the ADU. Again, that's just following 50% of our TAF fees that were recently adopted. So the action options on the left is what came out of the P3 committee, again, and that would be a charge at 50% of the TAF that we would evaluate, or on the primary residents of the lot. Option two would be to come up with a different rate that ranges from 0% as it currently is, up, up to, and including the P3 option. That's a quickfire way of doing a TAF presentation.
Thank you very much. So again, just looking to council, there are two options provided to you up above. The P3 recommendation, 50% reduction, and then option two, coming up with something other than a 50%. So I'm turning to council, looking for thoughts. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, same thing. Option two, I'm, I'm not interested in, I want to see different, the condominium situation and the monpa ADU. We need to differentiate those. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, then Councilmember Walker, then Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Gamble.
So just from a historical perspective, we used to charge more than zero, correct? Did you guys look that up?
I, I don't have that history.
So that one was there. We changed that to zero previously, just for historical context. I was able to get the counties waived through a, they had a appeal process that you could submit, and I got their capital, but I had to pay ours. And then all of this stuff was, all the policy stuff was done after I got my, mine done, because I didn't want, so just for the record, but that's exactly why we did that. But the count, just so we're all clear, based off the recommendation, you're up to $23,000 that you would have to pull just for the impact fees. That's not, and on top of that would be the building permit fees. And that would be applicable even if it was built within the home, correct? It doesn't matter whether it's detached and/or otherwise. Yep. So if you wall off a room in your home and, and put a kitchen in it, and a bathroom, and that's accessory dwelling, you're, you have to pay $23,000 just in impact fees. And then on top of that, you're going to pay whatever building fees, that sort of thing. So just food for thought. This is, has, is the exact opposite of what this whole thing is supposed to be about.
Councilmember Walker, then Councilmember Scarborough. Councilmember Walker.
This is an awesome conversation. I appreciate it a lot. And I, the, the example that you have, Councilmember Gamble, about why you built your ADU, I love that. I think that that is probably the spirit of this law, or it's something that I hope, I think we all hope is the circumstance that it could serve. But I would ask if, if someone was to buy a rental with the idea of putting their parents in it, or their kids, should it be immune from impact fees? I, I would say not. It's still a new dwelling unit. It's still going to bring new people to the city. And I think unfortunately, the, again, while we hope that people would buy rentals for their, their parents or their kids, the reality is that people buy rentals to rent them out. I'm sure that's 90, 95% of why people buy rentals. And you can bet the developers are going to feel or think the same way. So I, I would ask, or just kind of pose the question out loud, is why should existing homeowners or the primary homeowner be charged those impact fees, but the ADUs not? It doesn't, doesn't really make sense to me. So that's my thoughts on it. I would go for option, option one.
Councilmember Scarborough, you have the floor next.
Well, I think the first question, I'm with Councilman Hanford down here, and Councilman Gamble. I think we have to determine that, why are you building this thing in the first place? If you're building it for the situation like Councilman Gamble's talking about, why should you be charged so much extra? Or if you're building it and it turns into a condominium, then there's an argument for impact fees and whatever else. But I'm, I'm kind of with Councilman Gamble on this. It's just, it's way too much money for somebody to, to want to put their parents with them, because the situation nowadays is that you can't afford, or parents are being pushed out of their homes because of taxes, or whatever. So you're trying to do something for your family to get them in a place that's safe to live, and to be charged a whole lot. And I'm not up with that unless somebody can explain it better to me. And y'all are here, and maybe you can. So I'm, I'm in the same shop as Councilman Gamble and Councilman Hanford. Probably closer to Councilman Hanford than Gamble. But until I can sit down with both of those people and talk about it more, I'm kind of on the fence.
Okay. So again, tonight, we're just, we need to give direction to staff. Do you want them to come back with the 50% option, or something between 0 and 50%? Okay. So for the record, we've lost Councilmember Fisher and Councilmember Gamble. I have one, two, three, four, five councilmembers in the room. With the councilmembers that are in the room, I'd like a motion. What would you like the staff to come back with? I'd like a motion for the recommendation or for option two. And if option two, give me a number. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I'd like to make a motion to advance the P3 recommendation. We talked about it for a long time, and I think tonight's discussion at, at least, kind of made me feel like other councilmembers feel similar, so.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, second from Councilmember Beaumont, for the P3 recommendation, that this would be, what would be brought back for a future decision of the council in June. Second from Councilmember Beaumont, any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough. No, it'd be the P3 recommendation. Okay. Councilmember Fisher and Councilmember Gamble, we have a motion on the floor to come back to you for your consideration, the P3 recommendation. Motion was made by Councilmember Walker, seconded by Councilmember Beaumont. We just entered discussion. Again, this is just to give direction to staff, so that you can make a decision in June. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes with Councilmembers Hanford, Scarborough, and, did you vote in favor? Let me finish. Motion passes for, for three, with Councilmembers Hanford, Scarborough, and Gamble voting against. Thank you all very much. So we do have a meeting that was listed to start four minutes ago. We're going to go ahead, and we're going to take a six-minute break to 7:10. We will start the regular meeting at 7:10 PM. We are adjourned from this. All right, good evening. And I forget what I said when the special workshop concluded, but we had adjourned the special workshop meeting just about six minutes ago. We are now entering the Monroe City Council regular business meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The time right now is 7:10 PM, and I'm going to go ahead and ask that Sheri, please call the roll.
Councilmembers, President, Councilmember Fulcher, Beaumont, Hanford, Walker, Gamble, officials.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Hanford, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item that we have on the agenda is public comments. We do have a couple of public hearings this evening. The public comments is not a time for the public hearing, so if you signed up for the public hearing or intend to speak for one of the two public hearings, we will, three public hearings, we will come to that momentarily. Is there anybody who has signed up for public comment? Sheri? Okay, that's for the, that's for the hearing. For, okay. Is there anybody that would like to provide general public comment that is not related to one of the three public hearings? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move off of the public comments. The next item we have on the agenda tonight is, are, we have two proclamations under item number five. I'm going to go ahead and start off with the first one, and that is the annual Powwow. So the annual Powwow is May 24th, 2025, and I'll go ahead and read this into the record. Whereas the Monroe Snohomish and Sultan School District Consortium, Skycomish Valley Indian Education Program is a federally funded program that focuses on academic support and cultural activities. And whereas the program serves Native American, Alaska Native students, preschool, high school age, preschool through high school age in Monroe, Snohomish, and Sultan School Districts. And whereas it is valuable that residents of the city of Monroe be aware of the importance of Native American, Alaska Native education programs. And whereas the Monroe Snohomish and Sultan School District Consortium, Skycomish Valley Indian Education Program, and Supporting Nonprofit Parent Organization, are sponsoring a unique ceremony on Saturday, May 24th, 2025, entitled the 21st Annual Traditional Powwow. And whereas the 21st Annual Traditional Powwow will be held at Monroe High School Commons, 17001 Tester Road, Monroe, Washington, 98272, from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And whereas the partnership awareness and cooperation are important themes of the traditional Powwow. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, do hereby thank the Skycomish Valley Indian Education Program and encourage residents and businesses in Monroe to participate in the 21st Annual Traditional Powwow on January, I'm sorry, on Saturday, May 24th, 2025. And going to go ahead and invite representatives to, from the, from the organization to come on up and just say a couple words. And if you could just state your name and association briefly, and any words you'd like to briefly share? Thank you.
Maris Miller. I'm the Family Liaison Coordinator for the program. And I just have, I'm so grateful for all the support we get from the city and from the school district. We've been in the school district as a program since 1980, which is, just shows the commitment in this area, and we're really grateful for it. I'll pass it on.
My name's Charles Peters. I'm a Talinkahaida from Alaska. 31 years with Skycomish Valley Indian Education as president. And I enjoy what I do. My daughters went through it, graduated. Have a grandson that went through it, graduated. Three more grandkids in it, and come to the Powwow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cheyenne Culver. I am Snoqualmie Tribe. I am also the treasurer for the Skycomish Valley Indian Education Group. And I graduated this program a long time ago. I've had a son graduate, and my daughter's graduating through it this June. So, and I hope you all can make it to the Powwow. It's a great event.
Thank you.
I'm Alex Culver. I'm the Monroe High School representative. I'm Snoqualmie Tribe. I'm graduating from the program this year. Come to the Powwow.
Hello, my name's Linda Peters, Charlie's wife. I'll just reiterate what he had mentioned. We've been in the program since 1993, I think about. We have three daughters that went to the program, four grandkids, and again, come to the Powwow.
Thank you. Well, we have a proclamation to go ahead and present to you, so I don't know if anybody would like to take any pictures, but I'll invite the council to come up, and we'll end this over.
Okay, are these for us?
We can, we'll hand them.
Yo, you want? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, everybody. The next one is a proclamation. It's under announcements and presentations, item number 5.2. This is recognizing, this is recognizing Monday, May 26th, 2025, as Memorial Day. Whereas we must never take for granted that as we go about our daily lives in our community, and while we sleep at night, in the safety of our homes, we do so while members of our armed forces are at work in dangerous and challenging conditions to protect us, our liberties, and our interests at home and abroad. And whereas on Memorial Day each year, we remember and honor members of our armed services who have fallen in service to our country. And whereas those who have fallen have left, left us with more than a memory, they've left, they've left us with an enduring legacy that we live today, and that we should honor in our daily walk and interactions with one another. And whereas in remembrance of those who have fallen, a rehling will take place at Lake Ty Park on Monday, May 26th, 2025, at 9:00 AM. And the Ward Brony Junior Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 7511 will hold a ceremony on Monday, May 26th, 2025, at 10:00 AM at the Monroe IOOF something cemetery. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Thomas, mayor of the city of Monroe, Washington, do hereby recognize Monday, May 26th, 2025, as Memorial Day, and encourage residents of Monroe to remember those members of the armed forces who have fallen in service to our country, to honor the legacy that they have left to us in our daily walk, and to join me in honoring their service in memory this Memorial Day weekend. Going to go ahead and invite our VFW representatives forward, and if you have any words to say, please go ahead and share them now.
Councilmembers, Mayor, my name's Drew James. I'm the state senior vice commander for the Veterans of Foreign Wars, member of Post 7511 as well. On behalf of myself and the post, we would like to thank the city council and the mayor for the continued years of support. I know it's been at least seven years since I've been involved, and every single year, it, it's, it's really honoring that the city takes such pride in honoring our veterans, to include Councilmember Scarborough, who is also a member of our post as well. So you kind of took my So you kind of took my thunder by putting everything in the proclamation there, Mayor. There is another event on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. We will be placing small flags out on the 600-plus veterans that are buried out at the IOF Cemetery. So if you are available, please come out and help. It's a lot of work just to prep for the weekend. So again, thank you for the continued support, and we hope to see everybody Monday at the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as before, we're going to go ahead and present this to you and take a picture if you like. All right, thank you very much, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item will be public hearings. The first public hearing is item 6.1. This is public hearing proposed code amendments for the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. Willian Barr. Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we are here for a public hearing and first reading of an ordinance for proposed code amendments to bring the city into compliance with recent state law change regarding the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. House Bill 1042 entitled Use of Existing Buildings for Residential Purposes was passed by the Washington State Legislature on July 23rd, 2023. House Bill 1042 is intended to encourage the interior redevelopment of existing buildings, commercial or mixed-use buildings, and the redevelopment of existing residential buildings at a higher density. House Bill 1042 defines an existing building as any building that was completed at least three years ago. The city is required to amend our municipal code to comply with House Bill 1042 within six months of adopting our new comprehensive plan, which for the city of Monroe puts our deadline for adopting these amendments at June 30th, 2025. House Bill 1042 has specific code amendments that are required to ease the transition of commercial buildings into residential uses. First, the city must allow 50% greater residential density for any project where the conversion takes place entirely within an existing commercial or mixed-use building. So for example, if you have a building that the land can support generally a 10-unit residential project, if the conversion is done entirely within the existing building, the city would have to allow up to 15 units in that building. The remainder of House Bill 1042 is worded with items that the city shall not require for these types of conversions. So the city cannot require any additional parking for the areas of the building that are converted to residential uses. We can require that any existing onsite parking be retained, and we're proposing to do that with these code amendments. The city can't require any additional permitting for the conversions beyond what would be required for a new building in the same area. Cities cannot require any additional exterior design standards. And we cannot require that the ground floor remain commercial unless it's along a major pedestrian corridor, which here in Monroe is just our promenade in the downtown. We can't require any additional transportation studies or any super, or environmental review on the conversion projects. And only the areas that are being converted within a building must be brought up to current building codes. If an area of the building is left untouched, those areas of the building would not have to come up to current energy codes. And finally, the city cannot deny a project based on any existing nonconformities. So an easy example of this would be if a building, say in an older part of town, was built close to a property line, and the current setback is, say, five feet for that area, and the building is closer than that, the city could not deny the entire conversion process just because it doesn't meet that current setback and it has an existing nonconformity. House Bill 1042 requires that we allow the conversion of buildings in mixed-use and commercial zones that also allow for multifamily housing. So here in the city of Monroe, we have the zones and overlays listed on screen that these conversions could potentially happen in. So in the mixed-use, general, and neighborhood zones, in the commercial, downtown commercial, in the residential, east downtown, and historic main zones, and then in the general commercial, only in the North Kelsey Tierney Place overlay. So I have two zoning maps. So this is our zoning map right now, and the arrows point to the zones that these code amendments would apply to. So for the mixed use, you've got the lightest purple, which is your mixed-use neighborhood, mostly along Main Street and partially around Village Way. The darkest is mixed-use general, mostly along Main Street and a little bit along 179th. Downtown commercial in the bright red, and then the polka-dotted area within the pink is that North Kelsey overlay in the general commercial zone. I also included, this is the proposed zoning map that Planning Manager Turtleow has been presenting, that will bring us into compliance with our newly updated comprehensive plan. And the areas that are changing that are also related to the zones we're talking about today are some added mixed-use general along the rest of 179th and then up in the corner off Roosevelt Road. And zooming in a little bit on the downtown commercial, any areas in this downtown commercial except the promenade could be converted into residential uses potentially, and the promenade, as a reminder, is that hatched area and just the first floor of the hatched area facing Main Street. So here are some examples around town about what this could look like here in Monroe. The buildings on the, this images were just selected based on location and age of the building. They're in the correct zones, and they're more than three years old. With the exception of one building, none of these property owners have reached out to us. This is just kind of some examples you can envision it around town. So this is in the mixed-use neighborhood zone. Here's some example in the mixed-use general zone. Here are some examples from historic main. It'll just be those areas in yellow, which is the upper story. And some of these areas, I believe, might actually already be residential, so they could potentially take advantage of the added density if they did some sort of a remodel and get more units in those spaces. Here are some examples in the downtown commercial, and you'll notice the one building that is currently boarded up. That building could potentially take advantage of the conversion. The property owner did reach out to us with some questions about the code amendment. They've also, we've also had a pre-application meeting for a different use as well, so I think they're just pursuing all their options at this point. And then the BECU building is the only building in the North Kelsey Tierney overlay that would qualify because it's the only building there that's over three years old. So what are going to be some of the challenges that these buildings could face if they're trying to do these conversions? As with many things, it's going to be the cost. Although the whole building doesn't necessarily have to be taken up to current building energy codes, the converted spaces would need to be upgraded. And in discussing with our building department, some of those big-ticket items could include insulation, windows, mechanical systems, water or sewer systems, and potential structural upgrades, including seismic reinforcements. The city of Seattle is expecting about 12 of these types of conversions in the next seven years. The city of Bellevue is expecting about less than five of these in the next seven years. And the city of Bellevue actually did some extensive outreach as part of their code amendment process, and they found that some of the most interested property owners were property owners of hotels and kind of like low-rise office-style buildings, maybe ones that were both like the 80s or 90s. And based on populations, if you go from Seattle, potentially 12 of these, Bellevue less than five, Monroe might be expecting to see less than one in the next seven years. But again, this is just one option that we're adding in our housing tool belt here. And it's important that when city council is considering amendments to the city's development regulations, that we keep in mind the Growth Management Act planning goals. While these proposed amendments are required by state law, they will still help the city meet several of our GMA planning goals, including the reduction of sprawl in housing by encouraging the redevelopment of existing buildings within city limits and increasing our housing here in Monroe, and potentially economic development and property rights as it gives property owners more options on what they can do with their existing buildings here in town. So far in this process, the code amendments have been to an introduction with Planning Commission and then introductions with both the Community, Community Human Services Advisory Board and Economic Development Advisory Board. At TRSAB, the main comments I received were the members of the commission were concerned that, about the parking and the exterior design standards of these types of conversions. But staff, we've reminded them that unfortunately, those items are specifically called out in the state law as something that we cannot add extra requirements on. So no changes were proposed to the code amendments based on that conversation. And then at EDAB, the members were excited that the property owners would have more options on what they could do with potentially underutilized buildings. One interesting point they brought up is they asked if these could potentially be turned into short-term rentals, which theoretically, yes, they could, since the city doesn't regulate short-term rentals. If a property owner went through the conversion process and changed it into residential, what they chose to do with it after, whether they rented it or wanted to do a short-term rental is not something the city currently regulates. So theoretically, yes. After that, we had a public hearing at the Planning Commission. No public comments were received prior to or at the public hearing, and the Commission, Planning Commission voted unanimously to adopt the findings of facts recommending that council approve the proposed code amendments. Next steps, today, we're having our first reading of the proposed ordinance and our public hearing. If all goes well tonight, we have second reading and adoption at the June 10th meeting, which will have us completed and the code amended before that June 30th deadline. Just a quick summary. This is one of several upcoming housing-related code amendments, many of which you're actually going to hear about tonight. The proposed code amendments are designed to help remove land use barriers with the conversion of existing commercial spaces into residential uses. And House Bill 1042 is a state-mandated update, and the proposed amendments need to be completed by June 30th of this year. So if anybody has any questions?
All right, thank you very much. And just for the record, we have already opened the public hearing, and I do have rules regarding public hearings that I can read and if I feel that we need to, and I don't feel that we need to right now. Also, if you've submitted any comments in the past and you're going to provide comment this evening, just recognize that any timely written comments that you submitted have already been transmitted to the council. At this point in time, I'm now going to ask the council, before we go to public comment or public comment during the public hearing, I'm going to ask, do any of the councilmembers have any clarifying questions of staff? And I did see that Councilmember Scarborough's flag went up, so I'll take Councilmember Scarborough and then Councilmember Gamble, and then Councilmember Fisher. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. One of your first slides, it said they can go up to 50, they are required to go up to 50% more capacity, or they are allowed to?
They are allowed to.
Okay, and then the second part of that was if somebody goes up 50%, but we are not allowed to require any additional parking, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Doesn't make sense to me, but that's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Just because it's top of mind, so we convert it to resident, it gets converted to residential, they would go through the residential impact fee schedule then, correct? Because it's being converted?
Yes, correct. There's nothing about impact fees as part of the state House Bill.
So they would just, they would, they would pay their, wait, I don't understand that statement.
We're not proposing any changes to the impact fees, so yes, they would be charged.
Correct, they would just be charged the, the current structure.
Yes, yep.
And that would be borne by the property owner, correct?
Whoever is pulling the permit.
Property owner, okay, the conversion. Got it. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Hi, thanks. Some of the conversion, you were talking about lot lines, like we wouldn't be able to deny it if it was too close to the lot line. Can we not deny it, but have them reduce the amount of people that would be in there? Like if that lot line was really close, would there be areas of the building that could not be used for residential?
No, that's not something we could do, but there are provisions in the building code that require different type of wall. If it's that close to a property line, so it could just be more expensive to build that outer wall.
And then additional exterior design standards. I was hoping that maybe you could brush up my mind on our design standards that we have in place.
Sure. So typically, depending on the scale of the project, if a building was going to be converted in some way and it was over about 50%, then the building would have to be brought up to current design standards. We have several, depending on where you're at in town. With this proposal, if they're specifically converting to residential, what the outside of the building looks like when they start is what the outside of the building will look like when they're finished. The only exception would be if they needed to add some sort of life safety, something, think like in my mind, the first thing is a ramp. We could maybe have some standards on that specific new item, but nothing new beyond that.
So they would have to abide by our existing design standards if they were to convert? We just couldn't put additional ones on there?
No, we can't even require our existing ones on the conversion. How the building looks at the beginning would be how it would look at the end.
So it said buildings that had been built longer than three years ago?
Correct.
So next year, does it go to four years, or are there more, more buildings that will be able to then take advantage of this?
Great question. No, it should just be, it's worded three years after certificate of occupancy, so every year there'll be more.
Every year there would be more. All right. They're allowed in mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use, right?
Mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use in general, yeah.
Okay. But ADUs aren't allowed there, correct?
I believe that is correct. Anywho, could clarify later.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for clarification before I move to public comment? Go ahead, Councilmember Fulcher, and then Councilmember Beaumont.
Just a couple of clarifications on some of the things, I want to make sure I get this. So how the beginning, how the building looks at the beginning is how it needs to look at the end. So if it's boarded up now, it can look boarded up at the end? I mean.
That's a great question. I should say the city can't require any additional exterior design modifications. The boarded-up windows, I would not say is a design choice right now, and hopefully that would be, and probably has something else in a different section that they can't keep the boarded-up windows, but theoretically, the outside of the building itself could look the same unless the property owner chose to do something different.
Okay. The other thing was regarding some of the earlier boards and commissions, then the questions about short-term versus long-term rentals, I believe you had said what the property owner chooses to do with it is not up to the city. Like we know that it is going to be for residential use, but, so this just kind of leads to an earlier conversation, which, you know, depending on who you're putting in there, doesn't really matter. It matters what you're doing to the building to make it an occupancy place, a residential place.
I'm not sure I entirely understand the question.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm just, I'm thinking out loud, so I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
There we go. Ms. Barr, your presentations are spectacular. Thank you so much. I love how you put examples of buildings, some of them I've been wondering about, boom, there they are. It's interesting, the Howland Building, where you were showing the slide with the highlighted areas, that has been in residential use since it was built, believe it or not, on that top floor. And I know that just because I'm a Historical Society person. Mrs. Howland lived upstairs there for a long time. A couple of questions. It's pretty shocking to me, this Bill 10- A couple of questions, it's pretty shocking to me, this Bill 1042, there's a lot of things we don't have control over, which I understand, and I'm sure that that's a challenge. I am wondering if we have done any outreach to building owners or if we're planning to do that, or if anyone has reached out to us?
We have not done any outreach to building owners specifically regarding this code amendment beyond the typical public hearing notices that would go out citywide from our usual channels. I think the only inquiry we've had is for the building on Main Street that's currently boarded up. I did not speak with them personally, but they heard they reached out to someone else in the department, just asking some general questions about it. But then the next week, we did have a pre-up for a different use, so it sounds like they're still looking at all their options.
And it sounds like your comparisons with City of Bellevue and cities like that, they have not had a lot of movement on this, and it doesn't sound like we're anticipating a lot. And again, you never know. The other thing I wanted to ask about is the Central School Building. Have we had any discussions from the school district about that potentially becoming condos or some kind of housing?
We have not, to my knowledge.
Okay, thanks so much.
All right, any other clarifications on the ordinance? Okay, with that said, we're going to go ahead and turn to the public comment portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to come forward to speak on this public hearing? This is the first one in the packet. Again, I'll go ahead and reiterate, this is proposed code amendments for the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses. Go ahead. You're Stacy McGregor? Okay, I have you signed up, you can speak on this, but I do have you signed up on a different one, which is ADUs. Okay, perfect.
Planning to speak on ADUs, but this one piqued my interest.
Stacy, let's get the three-minute marker up first, thanks.
I'm Stacy McGregor, I live on Main and Kelsey in the neighborhood commercial zone, which would be impacted by this code amendment. And I'm reviewing it right now for the first time, so I may be wrong, but it appears that my residential home is illegally non-conforming use. It was built in 1926, it's a historic home in downtown. And it's not subject to the ADU code, which is what I'll speak to later, but it would be subject to this code, which in addition to what I just read, commercial uses, it also allows conversion of residential uses into a higher density. So my single-family home could be converted to additional units. But the code that's presented would require a minimum number of attached units of three dwelling units. So my current single-family home would have to become three apartments. I could not put a basement apartment in my attached home. So as a point of interest, it would be a beneficial code if we could have two residential units instead of three, because that would entirely change the character of my historic residential home to become a three-unit apartment building instead of a two-unit, which would not change the character at all. My basement is a lovely place to convert into an apartment, but I can't under the code. So I would ask council to consider actually downgrading the code to allow two attached dwelling units instead of three attached dwelling units in existing residential uses in the neighborhood commercial zone. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other, anybody else like to speak on this first item, on the conversion of existing commercial buildings into residential uses? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move off that. And I'm going to go ahead and ask, just a second. Okay, any other additional questions of staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
So I guess that piqued my interest on that one, is with this, and it was converted to residential property, that would be in conflict with some of our zoning that we're going through, correct? So does that become a non?
Legally non-conforming use?
So it's just a way, because, I mean, we're changing the zoning, and then they would be able to change it to residential, and then it's just legal non-conforming? Is that what it would be?
I'm not sure I entirely understand the question, because it's not changing the.
We are changing different areas, right? We're zoning into mixed-use commercial, right, or commercial?
As part of the city rezon.
Part of our rezoning efforts?
Correct.
In our forty-year plan, you know, on how we're going to. So I guess, once, you know, thank you for the comment there. I just started to think, well, then technically, under this one, you could petition, because you've changed to commercial, change it back to residential, and then you would be legal non-conforming? Is that how that would work?
This is for the conversion of existing commercial or mixed-use buildings, so.
Correct, but if, once it's approved, and once you rezone, and it becomes existing, theoretically, then you could take and convert it back to residential?
It depends on the zoning of the underlying zone. It depends on if residential, single-family, or.
Is allowed already.
Is allowed already.
I get that, I was just saying, I'm trying to, if we did have something that was just changed to commercial. Okay, I think I answered my own question.
And I had the two zoning maps up, the only two zones, the only zone that is being changed that is also a part of these particular code amendments is that mixed-use general. And where some of the mixed-use generals being added along 179th and Roosevelt Road. And when, at the time a permit's submitted, it would need to be in allowed use. So, I mean, and right now, I think that most of those areas are residential use that are being changed to mixed-use general. So if you applied right now, these code amendments wouldn't apply to you. So we're actually adding more space that they'd apply to. I don't see a way how this would make anything legally non-conforming or illegally non-conforming.
No, where I'm playing it out is that both things occur, right? And so you have a mixed-use, and you have a commercial on the bottom. It's been converted to commercial, because we made it mixed-use, right? Then, five years from now, six years from now, there's nothing stopping them from coming back and saying, you know what? Because of what we just passed today, or this, I'm going to convert it back to residential.
Oh, correct, you could change a building that's commercial use into a residential use in the zones that were allowed, correct?
Thank you, that's Rose. That actually answers the comment from somebody else previous that was complaining about not being able to move it back to residential. That's why I was asking that, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for staff or a motion from the council? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, unless there's an objection. There's no objection to closing the public hearing. And then I'm going to ask the council, is there need, additional time to need to consider this matter? Or are you ready to make a motion? If so, please go ahead and make a motion. Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to approve for first reading, ordinance number 008/2025, amending chapter 22.20, MMC mixed-use zoning districts, chapter 22.22 MMC downtown commercial zoning districts, chapter 22.26 MMC general commercial zoning districts, chapter 22.42 MMC design standards, chapter 22.44 MMC parking standards and design, and chapter 22.78 MMC State Environmental Policy Act, providing for the conversion of existing buildings into residential purposes in compliance with engrossed substitute House Bill 1042, setting forth legislative findings, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Walker for the request to action under 6.1, shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be item number 6.2, Public Hearing, Proposed Accessory Dwelling Unit and Permit Processing Code Amendments with Amy Bright. Good evening again. So just for the record, we are now opening the public hearing for this one. As stated before, any written comments that have been sent to the, that have been sent to the city earlier in a timely manner have already been provided to the council. And I'm going to go ahead and ask that Amy go ahead and provide a description of the matter under consideration.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to present the ADU and Permit Processing Code Amendments. These code amendments are in response to House Bill 1337, which is in relation to easing the barriers for construction of accessory dwelling units. This is a public hearing of one of several housing-related code amendments that will be before you either tonight or in the future. So I just wanted to start with the timeline of where we've been. I presented this presentation at CHASAB on February 5th, and again, with the P3 Committee on February 25th. And then Planning Commission had a public hearing on April 14th. At that, at that public hearing, we did not receive any written comments, but we did receive three public comments that evening, and I will discuss those in later slides. They were generally in favor, but there were some comments they wanted to provide. On May 12th, the Planning Commission adopted the findings of fact and recommendation to council, and that is in your packet. And then last week, we had an introduction here at City Council. Tonight is the public hearing in first reading. And if you plan, if you do end up adopting, making a motion to adopt this tonight, then we will come back on June 10th for second reading. If you don't, and you plan to extend the public hearing, we will need to notice and then come back again on June 10th. And then just a reminder, this is required to be adopted by the end of June, so June 30th. So just an overview of the code amendments. As I mentioned, Washington House Bill 1337 passed to expand housing options, remove the barriers for construction of accessory dwelling units, and then there's that deadline of June 30th. And it has since been codified as RCW 3670A 680 and 681. So now, I'm just going to go over pretty much each item there in 3670A 681 and explain that. So again, it says that we need to adopt these, the minimum regulations in the state law by six months after the adoption of our comprehensive plan, and that puts us at the end of June. And if we do not adopt the requirements, then those requirements in state law then supersede any conflicting local development regulations. The city may not assess impact fees on the construction of ADUs that are greater than 50% of the impact fees that would be imposed on the principal unit. This is not a part of the code amendments before you tonight, that is a separate discussion. The city must remove our current requirement of owner occupancy, where the owner must reside either in the primary or accessory dwelling unit. And so the amendments before you have that change. The city must allow two accessory dwelling units in all zones that allow for single-family homes in the following configurations, one attached ADU and one detached ADU, or two attached ADUs, or two detached ADUs. So there was a public comment relating to this. Actually, there was two public comments at Planning Commission relating to this. And those, both of those people, to generalize, they both spoke. And they are hoping that we expand the zones that we allow accessory dwelling units in. And so one has property in the multifamily zone, and one has a property in the mixed-use neighborhood zone. We don't currently allow single-family dwelling units in those zones, so we are not proposing to allow for accessory dwelling units in those zones. Very similar to the last requirement, the city must permit ADU structures that are detached. Minimum lot size, so the city must allow an accessory dwelling unit on any lot that meets the minimum lot size required for the principal unit. There was a public comment based on this topic as well. There was at Planning Commission, when we were at the Planning Commission phase, there was, our amendments at that time mentioned that accessory dwelling units could only be built on lots that met the minimum lot size for the primary dwelling unit. We don't have minimum lot sizes in any of our single-family zones. So since that meeting, staff is proposing to take that section out to remove any confusion. And so that is a change since the Planning Commission public hearing. So just to summarize that, there won't be a minimum lot size requirement for accessory dwelling units. The gross floor area, so state law says that we must not establish a maximum floor area requirement for ADUs that is less than 1,000 square feet. Planning Commission recommendation is that the maximum size shall be limited to the larger of 1,000 square feet or 50% of the total floor area of the principal dwelling unit, excluding any related garage area. Roof height, the general rule is the city may not establish roof height limits on ADUs of less than 24 feet. And there's an exception in state law that says if our height limitations in that zone are less than 24 feet, then we can require a lower height. So this, in all of our single-family zones, our maximum roof heights are greater than 24 feet. So staff, Planning Commission has recommended that the accessory unit be the same height across the board. We don't really differentiate the difference between a residential unit building height versus a accessory unit dwelling, or height, building height. This was not discussed in length at Planning Commission, although their recommendation was to keep it consistent. It really wasn't a major topic of discussion. So just to summarize that, the roof height proposal in your packet is just similar, the same as the primary structure dwelling, building height. Design restrictions, the city may not impose setback requirements, yard coverage limits, tree retention mandates, restrictions on entry door locations, aesthetic requirements, or requirements for design review for ADUs that are more restrictive than those for the principal unit. So the amendments in your packet include any removal of those aesthetic requirements, entry door locations, we don't have tree retention mandates, so that doesn't apply. So there was a question at the last meeting of introduction and relating to the siding materials. So I did some research, and in general, all of our design standards require high-quality materials with a long lifespan. And examples are shown in those that do include metal siding. So the city encourages even metal siding. And also, the design standards do not require that the primary and secondary structures match. So ADUs will be required to follow the design standards that are in their respective areas of the city. We have a few different sets of design standards depending on where you are in the city. State law requires the city must allow detached dwelling units to be sited on a lot line if they abut a public alley. Unless the city plows the public alley, we don't plow any of our alleys in the city currently. So the amendments reflect this as well. The city must allow ADUs to be converted from existing structures, including but not limited to garages, even if they violate current code requirements or setbacks or lot coverage. This does not mean a property owner doesn't need to follow building codes for life safety. They would still need to follow those requirements. Condos, the city may not prohibit the sale or conveyance of condos. We don't currently regulate condos, and we won't begin to regulate condos. The city may not require public improvements as a condition of permitting ADUs. We don't currently do this, and we're not proposing to do this. The city may not require off-street parking as a condition of permitting ADUs that are within one-half mile walking distance of a major transit stop. So we don't have major transit stops within the city of Monroe. So the staff and Planning Commission recommendation is to continue to require one additional stall per accessory dwelling unit.
Councilmember Gamble?
Just a question on that one statement, no major traffic stop. What about the park and ride, is that within a half a mile of some of our residents?
Their criteria, the major transit stop is a defined term. And there, nothing in the city meets that criteria at. the city meets that criteria at this time. It has to do with how often the buses, I think it's every 30 minutes that they stop, and we don't have one that actually meets that at this time.
So that's the definition, every 30 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Would that switch if it changed, I guess is the only question? Because it's something we've been pushing for for a while, so just...
Yes, so the code amendments do reflect this. It's just the language about the major transit stop is in the code amendments, and so yes, it would change if that changed.
Okay, great, thanks.
In the code amendments, we have amendments for permit processing. This is not a requirement from state law, but Commerce is recommending that we streamline the accessory dwelling unit permitting process, and so staff and Planning Commission's recommendation is to change the land use permit for accessory dwelling units from a type 2 to a type 1 land use permit. In addition, I don't have a slide for this, there are amendments to MMC 2280, critical areas, and it exempts ADUs from critical area regulations where they are at least 250 feet from the critical area. So when City Council is considering the amendments to city development regulations that in part implement the city's comprehensive plan, the commission needs to consider the growth management or GMA planning goals outlined on this slide. While the proposed amendments are required by state law, they also help the city meet its GMA planning goals. The ones that we've identified are in green on the screen: urban growth, reduced sprawl, housing, property rights, and permitting. So I have a motion language on the screen, but I'm available if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. So that concludes the staff presentation. I turn to the council for any clarifying questions about the ordinance before you. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and see if there are any members of the public that would like to speak on this item. We'll go ahead and get our three-minute timer up. Go ahead. And let's wait for the three-minute timer to hop up on the screen, please.
Is it there?
Nope. Okay, since we're having issues, let me go ahead and I'll keep the timer right here just a second. All right, go ahead.
Hi again, I'm Stacy McGregor. I live at the corner of Kelsey and Main, and staff is recommending ADUs only in the zones that allow single-family residents. This is a requirement from the state. In the mixed-use zones, which are around the hospital, around City Hall, and Main Street west of Blakely, there are numerous single-family residences, including the majority of the historical homes on Main Street. While zoning allows these historical homes to continue to operate as single-family residences, the code has changed historically, and these single-family residences are no longer conforming and no longer a permitted housing type. Standalone single-family homes are not allowed in the mixed-use zones. Recently, the high cost of housing has made these homes generally only economically viable as single-family housing. They are not being converted to commercial uses, and they're not being sold as such. For commercial uses, okay, sorry, allowing ADUs would increase the economic viability of the historical homes and encourage their presentation, their preservation. Allowing ADUs instead of the prior commercial conversion code that Leanne presented would also require off-street parking, which would be a benefit over not requiring off-street parking. For commercial uses, ADUs could create a live-work situation in having the ability to add a top-floor basement or garage apartment, which would allow commercial uses to become more economically viable. For the existing single-family residential uses, a basement or a garage apartment or detached ADU would make the preservation of the existing historical housing more economically viable and would further the preservation of the character in downtown. Additionally, there are a number of existing non-permitted ADUs on these lots. I looked for a home for over a year, and of the four that I saw on Main Street, three had unpermitted ADUs. Providing a code option to make these legally conforming will increase the city tax revenue, increase life safety through permit review, and reflect the silent approval of a use that is currently existing but not allowed. In addition, in addition to adopting the proposed ADU code, I request that City Council direct staff to include an allowance for ADUs in the mixed-use neighborhoods in legally non-conforming residences, and to allow ADUs as accessories to commercial uses, so that if you have a commercial use, you could also have an apartment in your home and live on your commercial use, such as the vet clinics and dentist offices and chiropractor offices on Main Street, as well as the existing single-family homes could have apartments to allow multifamily living or economic options for those residences and preserve the historical homes in downtown.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this topic? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and turn to the council. Council, do you have any additional questions to ask of staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
So many questions. Oh my gosh. I think the first thing is, is there any way to ask the state for an extension on this whole thing? Do they have any idea what they're doing to these small cities to revamp all this stuff?
If we, no, if we don't pass the minimum standards by the state, then the state law supersedes local regulation.
Okay, one of my next series of questions here. I have quite a notebook here. Let's start with, well, some of the things with ADUs, there's obviously a lot of challenges. One that came up when we were down in Olympia was encouraging ADUs to be built because it would apply towards our affordable housing numbers with our comp plan. And then there were several communities that had just that and went to PSRC, and they said, mm, sorry, they're too expensive to buy. So I just want people to know that, too, that ADU doesn't exactly mean affordable housing. PSRC will say, no, thank you, that's too much, and then it doesn't count for our number. So don't, I'm not going to let that be a leading cause for me, because they'll just, it sounds like they've made a habit of just denying that anyway. Is there a minimum, a minimum lot size to condo? So I know there's not a minimum lot size to build the ADUs, right?
Condo, is, you're typically selling the airspace?
Yeah, there's, there's no minimum lot size for a condo.
Okay, so theoretically, it could just be really tall.
Yes, you could, and I've seen, you can actually condo and add a parking space in a parking garage.
Okay, are we doing that next? Is that the next discussion?
We don't have a parking garage. That's why I used that example.
Okay, perfect. So then that will bring me to the roof height. So the roof height for residents now is, is it 35 feet?
Yes, in R7, it is 35 feet, for an example.
And that's the peak, mid, or?
It's midpoint, between the peak, yes.
So it could be 40 theoretically, depending on the pitch, or 38 depending on the pitch? So it could be taller than 35?
Potentially.
Okay, and there is no way to, so if we adjust that for ADUs, we would have to also adjust that for the primary as well?
No, you can, you can adjust it for the accessory dwelling unit. You can't adjust it lower than 24 feet.
And that, again, is that peak, mid, or is it just mid, like the primary?
Yeah, so mid is, we have diagrams in our code on how to calculate roof height, and so I think it would make sense to keep it the same across. If that change is made, if a change is made on that tonight, then we would need to extend the public hearing. Just, just letting you know.
Okay, so the highest, so as of right now, there could be a house that's 20 feet tall, but a 38-foot ADU theoretically, right?
If you're calculating to the top, the peak, but it would be, in our world, it would be 35 feet.
So yeah, I hate that. I think that it, that takes away the, I think the mayor had said last week, the definition of an ADU is an accessory dwelling. I think when you roll up to a house and you're like, is that the, is that the primary or the accessory? I think that that's a problem. So me personally, I would love to have that adjusted to the 24-foot limit for us. I know there's more you just have to bear with. Actually, you know what? I'm going to yield off of this thing and keep going through my notes and give somebody else a chance to speak if they need to.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else with questions of staff? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah. So I guess I am interested, so is there anything in the state that would preclude in this, preclude us from entertaining the idea of legal non-conforming having ADUs in legal non-conforming residential space, or is that just a Monroe thing? I think I know the answer, but...
Well, we have, we've had a lot of discussions over, over this, and one of the, one of the big points is that you recently passed a new comprehensive plan with your growth targets, and in multifamily and mixed-use zones, allowing for an ADU to be built would probably discourage those property owners from constructing the types of units that you have provided for in those zones.
So there's nothing stopping us, is what I'm hearing, yes?
Correct. Another, another topic that was discussed on that is the definition of accessory dwelling units is accessory to a primary dwelling unit. I know there was some discussion over making an accessory to a commercial use, and so we would really need to look at, maybe that's a different use type, maybe that's like a live-work unit instead of an accessory dwelling unit, because it's no longer accessory to a primary.
Yeah, I think the question I was entertaining, based off of the public, you know, feedback, which is a good one, especially since we were also talking about converting commercial to residential, that that is the primary use, is residential, and wanting to use it, but because it's non-conforming, can't use for ADU, but we can, we have the ability to do that, there's nothing, and that's exactly what the whole intent of that is. So for me, that feels hypocritical, that we would exclude that. It's weird to have the juxtaposition on the other side where we're saying, hey, we're going to convert from commercial back to residential, but we won't, we won't allow somebody in a legal, non-conforming residential to have an ADU. That doesn't make any sense to me, in light of that additional information. And then the only thing I would say, Councilmember Fisher, is that the peak thing is, doesn't bother me as much, probably because of exactly how I built my ADU, which is, a lot of ADUs are garage with an apartment on top, and you're going to hit that, you know, immediate, you know, immediately, so, and that was my dad's favorite place to hang out, plus where he kept, was the garage, because he could only have an 800-foot, and that would be 1,000, but only 800-foot, you know, living, living unit, but I don't think anybody's ever thought my ADU is an eyesore by any stretch of the imagination, so, anyway. But I, I understand your point, but that's a lot of desire on that one.
If I could add just a little clarification to the, and maybe this is where you're going to the question, and this gets to the, the public comment, that was specific about the city allowing ADUs in a mixed-use zone. I think that's kind of where your question was coming from. The city can do that. We've had discussion in the past about doing that. The city decided from a policy standpoint not to move forward on that. Planning Commission did not recommend it, but we're not precluded from doing that.
That's exact, that was exactly my, yeah, figured. So, so thank you for that, but we are obviously changing a lot of policy right now, so I thought I'd at least, you know, throw that out there, but, and then just for clarification, like the comp, if, if something like that, someone wanted to do the basement, you know, type of deal, which basically is within the same structure, be walled off, right? Based off of what we're proposing right now, but so there's no peak change or anything like that, but the fee structure that we're entertaining, that'd be an additional $30,000 just to do that, correct? Because those impact fees would apply across the board, regardless of whether it's a detached or within the main residence. So there would be no change to that home, just, other than walling it off, you would have to secure and pay all of those impact fees based off what we're proposing, correct? From the early discussion?
I don't believe so. We're not, just, just keeping it to the ADU discussion, say, if you, if you allowed an ADU in the mixed-use zone, and you wanted to do an ADU in the basement, it would be an attached ADU. We don't currently charge impact fees for ADUs unless, unless we made, unless we made that change. Yes, it does go back to the discussion that we were having earlier, but we're not proposing to make any changes in the AD, specifically in the ADU code.
Under today, there would be nothing, but if we were to adopt the changes that we were just discussing, they would have to pay all of those fees, just as the same as a detached.
As, as any ADU.
Okay, great, thanks.
I know, it's a little confusing.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my question was answered. My question was, why aren't we looking into the multifamily option that Stacy asked about? But I believe you just addressed that.
Yes, and just for clarification, she was asking about the mixed-use zone, a different comment, sorry, I don't, hopefully that's okay, the different commenter at the Planning Commission public hearing was asking about multifamily zone, but really, the staff's recommendation is that we just passed our comprehensive plan for densities that are much higher than a single-family lot with an accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you. Councilmember Foultrer?
Thank you. I know this is going to shock everybody, but I actually agree with Jason on this. The, the mixed-use neighborhood and different areas in the downtown with our older buildings, and I, if we are truly having a housing shortage, I do like the idea of looking at doing accessory to those downtown buildings, whether they are in the mixed-use neighborhood or they've gone to commercial, but I would like to explore that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fisher?
Again, I agree. So the, matching the primary and secondary, is there a way that we can kind of make it match? So, so the reason, so I have a very different experience than Councilmember Gamble with ADUs. I think I was probably about five minutes from getting attached to a vehicle and drug down Blakely Street at one point in time, and there's two really good examples. It's crazy, they're right next to each other. So we have someone who didn't go the full height and somebody who did, and it's somebody who matched the house, somebody that didn't. And so that height thing is, is kind of a big deal to me, because if you do a garage and then you do an ADU at the top, I mean, these things, and, and remember, this is downtown, so everything's pretty small, pretty short, like me, including me, the houses and me. And then to have these big buildings up that have not only different siding, but are also substantially taller than the primary house, I don't think it's the feel that I'm kind of going for downtown, or the things that we have discussed from being downtown. So I guess those are my two big things with that, is the roof height for the ADU, and then at least somewhat matching the primary, I don't know what the definition of somewhat is. I guess if it has wood siding, then it would have, the ADU would have wood siding, or something that looks similar, or is of a natural product and not something else. So those are my main concerns with this, is just not getting them, especially when we've shrunken down the lot size, and now we're just going to go straight out. It's the only option, so.
All right, so I've heard councilmembers show an interest in having staff come back with more information, potentially amendments to allow in the... potentially amendments to allow in the mixed-use zone. Is there anybody on council that would object to having something brought back to allow this ADUs in the mixed-use zone?
That links to the common brought up issue.
Correct. Okay. So we'll come back to what that means in just a second. And then the other thing that was brought up was the issue of accessory, so detached accessory dwelling unit height and limiting it to 24 feet. Okay. Is there anybody that objects to having staff get more information on that and bring back an amendment that would reflect that? Okay. So I see Councilmember Gamble shaking his head. No. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. And I feel Jason's comments, I feel Kyle's comments, is there any way that we could somehow establish that downtown, there is one set? Because I totally agree, we need to preserve our historic character in the downtown area and those ADUs you're speaking of, I know the one on Blakely is just not, it doesn't fit in. But Jason, at your property, you don't have anyone really around you. It's okay for you to have your, your height above the garage. So is it possible for us to sort of winnow those out?
So let's do this. We can certainly ask staff to take a look at different applications. I live in a subdivision that has small lots. I have a detached garage. We have a 35-plus, you know, structure. I don't think that with my planning background that it would be out of character to put an ADU on top of my two, you know, my two-car garage. I think it would look pretty natural. But there are other areas, like in the Freylands, you think of flat topography, you think of there not being already a detached garage. It feels different when you just build something straight up. So why don't we do this unless there's objection, have staff bring up, bring back some options that would address different types of settings? Maybe there's something where if you've got a 35-foot building already there today and you're coming in with something that is, you know, the same height and it's detached, maybe there's an application where that's okay. Maybe there's another application where it's not okay, like you've got a single-story house in the downtown going above it, maybe that's a problem. But what are your thoughts, Amy? Is that, are those two items that you could bring back? And with all this, with everything, just where my head is going, we would not close the public hearing. We would go ahead and continue the public hearing to the 10th and you would bring back...
Options.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, is there anything else that you would like her to bring back? Go ahead, Kyle.
There isn't anything, there isn't anything. I just feel like I have to apologize for all the work we're assigning you guys, so I apologize. This is something we're all going to kind of work through here. So, sorry.
So Kyle, you're, you're here to, to have these conversations. This has been a substantive policy conversation tonight and that, that's what you're here, that's what you're supposed to be here to do. So no apologies, please. You're, you're, you're cool. Okay. So, do you need any further direction from the council?
No.
Okay. Any further direction from me?
No.
Okay. So with all that said, counsel, unless there's further conversation and unless there's objection, we will keep the public hearing open to be continued on June 10th at our next city council meeting that begins at 7:00. So the hearing will continue sometime after 7:00. All right? All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 6.3. We're dealing with the tic-tac-toe of public hearings tonight. This is number three. Public hearing interim R7 zoning ordinance with Anita Marrero. Good evening.
Good evening.
And as before, I am hereby opening the public hearing. I'm sure Zach's like, there's, there's more to read, but I'm hereby reading, opening the public hearing and Amy's, not Amy, how about Anita? Anita's going to go ahead and give a presentation. We'll go ahead and ask for questions of clarification and then we'll open it up to public comment and then we'll continue from there. Any written comments already submitted or have already been given to the council if, if timely, and I think I took care of it. Go ahead, Anita.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm here to present the public hearing for the interim R7 zoning amendments. I'll just give you a quick overview. The interim ordinance allows townhomes in the R7 zoning district. The interim ordinance supports Imagine Monroe, the Housing Action Plan, and the housing policies of the updated 2024, 2024, 2044 Comprehensive Plan and meets the city's vision for middle housing. An introduction was given to city council on March 11, 2025. We are using the interim ordinance process because this allows the city to adopt the ordinance now while staff continues to work on the permanent ordinance and it'll go through the standard code amendment process. The city council did adopt the interim ordinance number 002/2025 on March 25, and we are required to do a public hearing on adopted interim ordinance, which must be held within 60 days of its adoption. So this is what we are accomplishing tonight. Just to go over quickly the code changes in the interim ordinance, added a P or permitted use to the land use table for attached dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, added a column for attached dwelling units to table 22.16.040P, bulk requirements for lot dimensions, setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera, and then also added a new section to chapter 22.42, design standards for the townhome development. The recommended action tonight is that the council may, but is not required, to adopt additional legislative findings in support of ordinance number 002/2025 at the conclusion of the public hearing. And we'll answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for clarification? Actually, any, any questions? Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
So when we say an interim R7, is this to change all the R4 to R7?
So if you do...
That we've talked about previously.
Yes. If you do approve the ordinance tonight regarding the zoning, yes, all the R4s will switch to R7 and these, these regulations apply to R7 zoning.
Nick?
You're welcome.
And I understood that on this one that, that we're supposed to continue this to June 10th, correct?
This one?
Yeah. Or is this one first and...
No, this is, this is just holding the public hearing for public comment if there, and then I will be working on the permanent ordinance. I have six months to work on that.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Any questions from council? Okay. And you need no further action except that we're going to close the public hearing?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So unless there's objection from the council, we are now closing the public hearing. Okay? The public hearing is now closed. Nothing further out left on this?
Nope, nothing. Not for now.
Wait, after everything else tonight, I was expecting more.
Yes.
You did say, but, is there more coming?
No, 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 no. I mean, in six months, but not, not tonight. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Anita. All right. Thank you, council. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And I turn to the council. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually have a couple of questions. I guess this would be for Alex Hamm, since he is the...
Just a second. Are you pulling, are you pulling an item from the agenda?
I just have a, just have a question. I'm not pulling an agenda item.
Let's pull it.
Okay.
If you have questions on an item, we will pull it from the agenda.
Okay. 7.1 and 7.2, please.
Okay. We will pull 7.1 and 7.2 from the agenda. Okay. Is there a motion from somebody to approve consent agenda items 7.3 through 7.6? Councilmember Hanford.
I move to approve consent agenda items 7.3 through 7.6 as listed.
Second question. I have a motion to approve items 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6 on the consent agenda and from Councilmember Hanford, a second from Councilmember Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right. We're going to go ahead and take item 7.1 and invite, do we have a staff member to respond Good evening.
Good evening, Alex Hamm, for the record, finance manager.
Okay. If you could just give a very, very high summary of what, this is just the ACH claims approval. Okay. What sort of questions you have? Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you very much. I was just wondering, I saw a, a charge or a check for Daily Journal of Commerce for $715. I was just wondering if that's for a newspaper subscription or ads or what that charge was for?
Typically, those are actually for advertisements. I don't know for that specific charge, but I do know the Journal of Commerce, we, this might actually be more of a Public Works. Generally, when we advertise our Public Works projects, that is one of the avenues that we are required to advertise to. Is that correct, Jaka?
Yeah.
Again, don't have the charge in front of me, but I would feel very confident that's for advertising a Public Works project rather than a subscription. Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then I had another question about $585 to J-Ray. I assume that's their monthly, what we pay them each month for their services.
I don't know if that's structured monthly, yeah. As needed though.
That's actually for our branding contract, and so it is one of the final invoices we will be seeing from J-Ray.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve, I guess it would be 7.1 from the consent agenda. I still have a question about 7.2, which...
Yep. We're not, we're, we'll wait, let's, we're going to take this one first. So you have, you've moved to approve item 7.1 from the consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay. Motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Hanford to approve item 7.1 on the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right. Next item is consent agenda item number 7.2. This is approving a contract, approving contract number 2022 hyphen 100 hyphen 01 with J-Ray for comprehensive city brand update. Deborah Knight, and what is your question?
My question, Deborah, is just clarification on J-Ray, this extension of the contract is simply to pay for their services that went over into 2025, correct?
Yes. Actually, the contract expired at the end of 2023, I believe. And so this extends the contract to the end of 2025.
Excellent. And I, I did read what was written and I did see that there is no further expenditure from the city for this, but I just wanted to make sure before I approved it that I truly did understand what this was.
That's correct. So far, we are actually under budget.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the clarification. I move to approve consent agenda item 7.2.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher to approve consent agenda item 7.2. This is approving a contract with J-Ray for comprehensive city plan brand, I'm sorry, for city brand update. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is council member reports. Go ahead and start off with Councilmember Foulter.
Oh, it's fun. Surprise. Surprise, yes. So yesterday I got the opportunity to go to the Snow 911, the new building there in Everett, 90,000 square feet, pretty amazing, big area for all the dispatchers and they've got everyone on campus now. It's actually a really cool setup and it was just neat to see that there's a bunch of people who serve our county on a regular basis and everything from the security of the towers to that comforting voice on the phone. And I think that they are the first responders that often get forgotten and so thanks to them and good luck in their new building.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
I have nothing to report, I guess, besides I'm looking forward to the opening of Curryview Park and then if this is the appropriate meeting to do it, I just wanted to wish Mr. Swanson well as you move into your next endeavor. I just appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. When I was really young at one of the city council meetings, you were willing to stay late and tell me about the Growth Management Act. And I think that speaks to your character, so very grateful for you and, and everything you do, and I know you'll do awesome in your next role, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. I pretty much, Zach did it to what Councilmember Walker said. I'm looking forward to the Curryview Park ribbon-cutting Friday and Ben, very sad to see you go, but also excited for your future. I remember attending the community open house sessions that we had multiple times at the schools and you and the team running those and kind of the same thing, staying late and talking to me and explaining to me everything that when we look at all these maps and it's like hard to understand and you did a great job of explaining it and compacting it down into bite-sized understanding. So thank you very much and we'll definitely miss you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble.
Some ditto's all the way around. Really going to miss you, sir. It's a, it's a loss for us. So anyway, I appreciate all of your years of service and just how you interact with us on a regular basis and how professional you were across the board and how you represented the city at all the different events and jumping between departments and willing to step up and, you know, across the board. So don't be a stranger. And there's, you know, if you do come to town, there's an ADU, you can say it if you want to check out the town. Just, just say it. There you go.
And it sounds like the water pressure's just fine.
That's right.
Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, I'd put it in. Same for me, man. Thank you. I won't elongate the meeting by going into everything else. But Friday, Curryview Park opening, is that it?
Yes.
Time?
Yes.
What about? And we have Monday, 9 o'clock late time, placing a wreath. And then placing flags at the IOF is 9 o'clock or 9 a.m. Saturday. Am I all right?
Mm-hmm.
So I can get it on my calendar. Nothing else to report or clarify?
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. Ditto, Ben, wow. You spent countless hours talking to me about historic preservation when you didn't have to. Really appreciate that. Gosh, I think I met you for the first time up in Port Townsend at the Main Street Conference and I wasn't, I was just there from the Historical Society as an interested citizen and you were so kind and just shared all sorts of information about the city and how things could be done and I will always be grateful to you. You've done great things here and you will be very, very missed. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
And bringing up the rear. So I'm going to wait for Ben, the Ben Swanson over there. I'll, I'll talk to Ben, to Ben later. I don't want you to get confused on, you know, who we're... So I've been doing a lot of walking, so I was just curious if, where we're at with our trespassing stuff on the parks with...
Oh.
The no trespassing thing?
Deborah can give an update.
Okay. The SRO truck, yeah, up at the high school, so that thing's awesome. My kids were super, super pumped about it. They, I gave them pictures of it, you know, there was a Facebook post and so they were the only ones that had pictures of it, so they were showing the kids. So there was quite a little thing going on at the high school with that. So that is awesome. And then with Ben, so again, sad to see you leave. Some of our other council members were talking about you explaining things to them. So explaining things to me when I was a planning commissioner, like brand new, must have been so incredibly frustrating. And it wasn't frustrating for you, or at least your face didn't show that it was. So I really appreciate that. I appreciate you with all the work that you've done here and it, I think it would be a surprise to people that you don't live in the community because you showed so much care for our community. So I really, really appreciate that and you will definitely be missed. I hope all the best for you in your next endeavors, but yeah, you, you will be missed here and I'll, missing you around, so as somebody said, don't be a stranger. I don't have an ADU yet, but it sounds like I might get one. And it's going to be 35 feet tall. So... Yeah, with that, I just really appreciate your time here, so thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next item is Staff and Department Reports. Finance Department.
Hi, Mayor, Council, and City Administrator. We went into this report in pretty much a lot of detail at the 5:30 meeting with Finance and HR. So I'll just give a couple of highlights, get it over quick. I mean, revenues are still coming in as planned, except for our kind of more permit-related revenues and such as our development-related revenues, such as the permit-related revenues and the utility connection charges. So we're still watching them closely and cutting back on our expenses in light of the economic uncertainty that's going on. So unless you have any other questions, that's all I really have to report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Finance? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor and Administrative Reports. We'll go ahead and start off with the Administrative Report for the Extended Agenda, 10.1.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of meeting cancellations. The P3 Committee meeting for Tuesday, the 27th, will be canceled, and the City Council meeting at 7 p.m. will be canceled. That's an observance of Memorial Day. And then our regularly scheduled first meeting of the month, which will be June 3rd. We don't have a need for any special meeting, so that meeting also will be canceled. Moving on then to the 10th, when we'll have our next regular business meeting, we do start with a Public Safety Committee meeting at 6 p.m., and we will have Approval of Minutes, an update on opioid settlement funds from Rachel Adams, a fee schedule adjustment for public safety fees, and the police budget overview. And then a discussion item of the Municipal Court Quarterly Update with Judge Ness. For the regular business meeting at 7 p.m., we do have Consent Agenda items for accounts payable and receivables, meeting minutes, payroll, and then accessory dwelling unit code amendments, and converting existing structures to residential code amendments. Some of those things, of course, may change with the extension of public hearings from tonight's meeting. And then final action will include an ordinance for first reading. It sounds like that also is coming back as unfinished business for more discussion, which will be the system development charges for accessory dwelling units and transportation and park impact fees for accessory dwelling units, and then the regular reports from departments. So some changes, obviously, to that extended agenda based upon action from council this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead. Councilmember Fisher.
I've been talking so much tonight. I may not be there for the Public Safety meeting on the 10th. So just so you know.
Thank you.
Anything else for the Extended Agenda from the council? All right, City Administrator Report.
Thank you. Couple of items. There was a question that came up at the last meeting, I believe that was from Councilmember Walker, regarding some proposed changes to the Affordable Housing Alliance. And I thought I would bring that back, just a quick update for council to let you know what's going on there, because there is a special meeting that is scheduled for June 4th, which will be before our next regular business meeting. And I think there was some direction requested from Councilmember Walker if there was a plan to attend that meeting and participate in that discussion with input from council. So the long and short of it is, is that there really isn't any material change that is happening to the Affordable Housing Alliance. It is moving the current Director position of the Alliance into a new position called Government Relations Director within HASCO, which is the Housing Alliance of Snohomish County. So that position, the Government Relations Director, will still be providing oversight to the Affordable Housing Alliance as a part of that position. What it does do then for cities who are a part of the Alliance is they will now have access to all of the experience, subject matter expertise at HASCO, the Housing Alliance of Snohomish County. So it is a net benefit to cities that are participating in the Alliance. There are no changes proposed to the Alliance budget, so that isn't changing, and there are no changes needed to the inter-local agency agreement between the city and the Alliance. So that is the only change. It is actually finally, I think, benefiting the Director of the Affordable Housing Alliance, giving him some additional resources in order to do his job more effectively, and then broadening the work that he's going to be doing to include some legislative outreach as a Government Relations Director, which will ultimately benefit the city as well, because we'll be able to then have a better understanding of some of the affordable housing legislation that's being proposed.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, other than I think Councilmember Walker just needs some consensus amongst council that he can act on the council's behalf and approve this proposed change.
All right, so Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
I was just going to say that was wonderfully explained. You should come and explain that to the actual AHA Board, because that was not understood at all. But after seeing it like that, it's a complete yes for me.
Does anybody have any problem with Councilmember Walker supporting that? Okay, sounds like you've got your consensus. Jake?
Good.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, the next item I have then is the Association of Washington Cities, the annual conference. So far, we've only heard back from Councilmember Hanford. And just as a reminder to others, there are two things that happen at that conference. One is it is the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference, and they do vote on items related to the Association of Washington Cities. We need to let the Association of Washington Cities know who our voting delegation is. And so what Clerk Wykoff and I are recommending is that if others, in addition to Councilmember Hanford, intend to go to that conference, it'll just be the first three council members who sign up who will be designated as our voting delegation. So again, just reach out now to Jody and Liam's absences. He's on vacation, and we can get you signed up for that. We also have the Walk of Flags that occurs, and so we've ordered flags. We hope that they will be here in time in order to have our new flag in the parade of flags. And that's all I have related to the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference, unless there are... Mayor, any questions from council?
Any questions, councilmembers? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you. Not regarding this, but just regarding the Puget Sound Regional Council meeting this Thursday. So I have my... Liam registered me, and I have my Evite ticket. So I'm checking to see if others... Because apparently Councilmember Fisher's does not have it. So do you have yours?
Fisher is missing.
I thought I signed up for it.
Okay, let me just double check.
And I can also... I think I got to call Sharon or something?
Okay, that's fine. We can check into that for you.
Sheila, I got to call her, and I can call her tomorrow too if I need to. I'll yield back a hand.
Thank you.
That was it. So Councilmember Walker, are you going? Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so Mayor's Report, couple items. You've already... Most of you have already mentioned them. First, I'll be laying a wreath out on Memorial Day. So it's at 9 a.m. Feel free to come and join me if you like. And then Friday this week, we've got the ribbon cutting for the Curry View Park, so that'll be exciting. I did not expect to see that done so quickly. I think we were expecting this to be an end-of-summer kind of completion. So I thank our park staff and the contractor for the work there. And then, let me see if there's anything else. Oh, I will not be at the next two council meetings. So Heather, you'll be up for those two meetings. Thank you. And I think that's all that I have to report on those. Oh, we did have a proclamation in the packets for Public Works Week for last week, so really appreciate all the work of our Public Works staff. So Jake, if you could please share how much I appreciate all the work that your staff does to keep the projects moving and everything, and definitely staying on top of the tagging, among other many, many things. So thank you and your staff. Please share my appreciation. And then lastly, Ben, I'm going to ask you to come forward, please.
So I might think the microphone can pick this up. I've known Ben since I was a council member, like probably 2025 or so. Probably been about 18, 20 years or so.
Yeah, 2006.
Yeah. I have really, really enjoyed working with Ben. Ben's always got a smile on his face. He's somebody... He's got a really light, friendly soul. He's somebody that I really enjoy having on our staff, and I am so going to miss having you on our staff. And I just wish you the absolute best luck with where you're going. I'm really going to miss you, and I know that our community is really going to miss you. And I just wish you the best of luck, and I'm going to present this to you today as a token of my appreciation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. No, I have... As you know, this is my second time around here. And so, no, I've always appreciated this community. When I left, it was one of those places that you always want to come back to. You know, it was just one of those things where, you know, your growth opportunities take you to different places. But I know coming back, especially, you know, coming back to this environment, the council and all the electeds, it was a very different environment. It was a very positive environment. I often, and I think Councilmember Hanford, I told you this probably three or four years ago, I refer to this council as model government. And I talk to my colleagues about that, because you have this diverse group of ideas and people that respectfully communicate with each other and actually come up with a better policy because you have these kind of diverse thought processes. And we have staff know who's on the conservative and who's on the liberal side. And so, you know, we kind of know and see these interactions take place, and it's an amazing thing to watch. And that's why I always say it's model government, because it's just, you come out with something better when people behave and respect each other and really put a lot of thought and effort into the policy. And so I've always talked about, you know, everyone with very high regard here, you know, to other cities and other staff members that I've worked with, and just how lucky I've worked for councils that have been very aggressive and very hostile, and it has a very negative impact on staff. You know, I mean, even down at, you know, kind of lower levels, it's just you don't want to go to work, or you don't want to show up for these meetings, and your productivity absolutely declines. And when you have something functioning like this, you get so much more done, and so much more done for the residents. And like you said, you know, about the residents, I mean, you have great people here. I mean, there's so many people I'm going to miss and just have made a huge impact on my life. And, you know, not to mention the staff are great anyway. But anyway, it's just been, it's been very nice. And I just want to thank you all so much for the opportunity, and just being here with you has made life very, very pleasurable. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing you continue. And I won't be a stranger. I will be back up here. So I don't know what prices you're charging for the ADU, but $20,000, I'm assuming? No, but again, yeah, thank you all. And I know, it's really cool, because, you know, so many of you, I mean, like, you know, when we first met, you know, that was several years ago, and we were on like planning commission together with several of you, and then first meeting you, I mean, I think I've been here like three months, maybe two months at the Historic Preservation Conference over at Port Townsend. Anyway, it's just, it's a lot of stories, a lot of memories, and they're all positive. So thank you so much. I really do appreciate this.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a need for an executive session this evening. So this is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, subsection 1, subsection little i. The time right now is 8:54, so we're going to go ahead and we'll set this up for an initial 11 minutes. We'll go ahead and announce an extension unless we're out of executive session by five minutes after 9 o'clock. And there will be action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting. So we are in executive session now for an initial 11 minutes.
Executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we're now out of executive session. There is no further business this evening. Unless there's objection from council, we will be adjourned. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.